Welcome to the Orlando Sentinel Editorial Board interview for Osceola County School Board District Two. Today, we'll be talking to incumbent Julius Melendez, an Army veteran with a background in TV and film production, and Beth Zeta Garcia, a public education coordinator for Osceola County's fire EMS system. Diana Granella, a child health advocate, declined to join us, so we are going to proceed with these two. And they are by far the top fundraisers in this race. So let's start. Actually, I think Julie has the first question.
Yes, thank you. So the Osceola County School District received a B rating again this year with only one D school and no Fs. This is worth celebrating, but the majority of Osceola County schools, 40 out of 73, are graded C. What is your plan for improving those schools? And we'll start with Mr. Melendez.
Thank you. That is an excellent question. We want everyone to move forward. That's why I fight with the county all the time to create an interlocal agreement. We're probably like, what does an interlocal agreement have to do with academic scores? The reality is, after the pandemic, there was a high amount of teacher vacancies and there was a shortage. The best way to move students academically is to have a certified teacher in the classroom. But the problem is, when the county keeps approving thousands upon thousands of houses, right now, we're building four schools. If we're already short teacher vacancies of certified teachers, we're going to get more vacancies when we expand and build three more schools down the road. We're trying to do the best we can by putting permanent substitutes in there. We try to have paraprofessionals in the classroom. As we all know, a paraprofessional is not a certified teacher. So that is one of the big issues that we have, is the county is continually growing faster than the educational infrastructure can catch up. So that is a big issue, is to make sure that there are certified teachers in the classroom and have the county work with us on our interlocal agreement. Because concurrency does exist. The state statutes allows it. What the issue is, it's not mandatory. It is something discretionary between the counties and the municipalities and the school board to agree on what that growth looks like. And so that's been a big issue of mine over the past couple of years, is to make sure that the growth can keep up with it so we can have the highest academic performance of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, same question.
Grades are just one way to measure the schools. In this case, I will not, I will focus in grades, but also in these kids, their environment, if there is something that, how we can approach the kids and go individually looking for their needs. Because there gotta be, my background is in psychology and education. And with that, whenever I work with any kids, I go individually specifically to that kid and their need. And I will definitely provide that safe environment for the kids that they can learn so we can improve, they can improve the grades and developing the character. Sometimes we just focus in a grade and kids are more than that. And if we inspiring like that quest for knowledge in the kids, since they're little ones, so we can go to their heart and say, okay, let me see what are those needs. Like, I have cases of kids that as soon as we address the issues at home and in the way that we have the parents involved, we can get a better outcome from that kid. And that's been my experience as a teacher.
Thank you for that. I have a follow-up, actually. Despite the grade, the U.S. News and World Report shows that among elementary school students, only 46% are proficient in reading, 40% are proficient in math. And those proficiency levels are significantly lower than other central Florida districts. And what should the district do to improve here? And we'll start with that with Ms. Garcia.
Those, the reading and math, for me, those are things that the school district, we're already working on that. We are looking for ways to improve. And I would say with more professional development, we are looking always for the latest in technology developing and also the processes that we have. Also for my students, like when we're talking about improving and that last question, definitely we have to focus individually in each student. And I think we have excellent teachers and educators in our area that are working and so we can improve the grades.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez, same question.
That is an excellent question. Actually, when we hired the new superintendent, Dr. Allen, who was one of the finalists, had spoken about increasing the ability to have access to early learning, that is, VPK. And the reality is, the state of Florida only pays for half of the program. And so we really want to lobby next year for the state of Florida to expand that. Instead of just taking extra tax breaks and giving it to whoever they want, let's invest those tax breaks in our children. Because study after study has shown that if kids go to VPK, they're going to get an early learning. Because the reality is, reading is a series of increments. You have to learn your vowel sounds. You have to learn phonetics. You know, those are basic skill sets that they can learn at the younger age before they start kindergarten. Because by the time you get to kindergarten, you know, the state of Florida has all these accountability measures in place. Because even though they don't test them until the third grade, but we feel that internal pressure. You know, the teachers feel like, okay, it's kindergarten, I gotta hit these checkboxes in order to get rated efficient or highly efficient because my bonus at the end of the year is tied to that. So we really believe in implementing Early Learning Coalition, you know, collaboration to get more VPK funding. And to be honest with you, I'm almost at the point where I want to work together with the Education Foundation, where if the state of Florida doesn't want to give us that money, maybe we can get private donations or some kind of endowment to pay for that other half. Because reality is, we have a lot of single parents, we have a lot of grandparents raising kids in the district that don't have a lot of access to money. So if the state of Florida is only going to pay for part of that VPK, we gotta find a way to get grants or the private sector to fill that void. Because I really believe getting an early start, letting them know what a classroom is like, the societal interactions, it's not just the academic piece. It's kind of like what Beth said, it's the whole child. And so we gotta get them learning to interact with other students, to learn what the command and control inside a classroom is, how to behave and interact with other students. So VPK is truly the solution to that.
And I got this information from U.S. News and World Report, so it might not be completely up to date. But it has, the most recent ratings have Osceola's student-to-teacher ratio also much worse than the state average, which the state average is 18 to 1. Osceola is 20 students for every teacher, and you've both touched on this already. But I'm wondering, when you look at that number, it seems to speak very much to the need to recruit and retain teachers. And yet, I know that in many ways your hands are kind of tied by the way the state funds education. So I'd like to know any other innovative ideas that you might have for recruiting and retaining teachers to help bump that ratio up. And let's start with Mr. Melendez.
As I said before, when we are growing, we're like the fifth fastest growing county in Florida, if not the entire United States. So putting a slowdown on that is not stopping growth, but letting growth go by phases. When a subdivision comes, there's usually phase one, phase two, and phase three. So I would like to say phase two and phase three don't come online until the educational infrastructure is in place. And to also let you know, those who've come to our school board meetings, when I first got elected, the union was a permanent fixture at all the meetings. They were constantly complaining about how they were disrespected, how they weren't feeling valued, you know, and not getting paid enough. We recently had a new teacher orientation, and I saw union members for the first time. I go, I miss you guys. You know, I miss you guys because I wanted your input. And her answer was, well, the new superintendent and the board is actually responding to our needs. We don't feel that we need to go to complain. So I'm like, wow. So that retention is getting there. Because I believe that a teacher needs to be respected. Because I was the board member that went to Dr. Pace when she was a prior superintendent. And I said, let's review all the testing, you know, because it's not just state testing. We have a lot of local district testing, too. We have all these formative assessments like NWEA. We have I Ready, and we're just test-heavy. And I said, let's analyze that. You know, let's actually say, you know, which test do we need to move students forward or not? And let's get rid of the ones that are not necessary. They appreciated that. When we hired the new superintendent, Dr. Shanoff, I was the board member that included the union and the teamsters on the superintendent selection committee. That wasn't done before. And they were like, well, how come they're involved? I said, because it's a collaborative effort. You have to have a good faith effort to work with people to get buy-in and get results. So retention is getting better. The only thing I can't deal with is the compression of salaries. That's a huge issue. And that's the state of Florida hand-tying us from not paying a veteran teacher more than what we pay a starting salary teacher.
Ms. Garcia, same question.
In recruitment, I would say that the best educators are always attracted to schools that have a safe environment and the students, too. And for, as a school board member, I'm definitely going to do my part with Osceola to do that. Create that safe environment for the teachers, also hire compensation, work with the unions, and hear about from the teachers. Right now, I'm not on the board. I'm doing my investigation, meeting with people, meeting with parents. And teacher pay is definitely important. We have to compensate that better so they can stay with us. Also their benefit support. And right now, I always see, like, for me, as an example, when I was back, there are tools that the teachers need. We need to provide that. Development for teachers, trainings, and that, those are things that are so important in order for us to keep them here and recruit them. We have to be more proactive in those areas, like all those benefits that we're offering and also giving them that environment that they feel safe, they feel comfortable, that they can go talk to the administration and working with them in a way that everyone is happy and they feel that they want to stay with us.
Thank you for that answer. I wanted to branch over to talk about the superintendent for a minute. I wanted to ask you both, are you satisfied with the performance of Superintendent Mark Shanoff? And if there was a revote to retain him, how would you vote? And we'll start with Ms. Garcia.
Right now, what I see as a mother, I'm a mother and a grandmother of students that go to public school here. What he's done is a great job. And he has meetings with parents. He's been meeting around the county, the district. And what I see, because the results and the data that we have, is that he's doing and the school has improved during his tenure. And I definitely, like, right now, I'm not part of the board. I cannot make that decision. But I definitely appreciate what he's doing and the job that he's doing.
Thank you. And Mr. Melendez, I know you touched on the performance in a prior answer, but I wondered if you could expand on that, maybe talk about ways that maximize the skills.
Yes. Well, I was the one that advocated for Dr. Shanoff, because he wasn't the first choice of the board. The majority of the board wanted Dr. Allen, and I think Dr. Allen's great. We're splitting hairs between good and great, you know? So I don't want to speak ill will. If Dr. Allen's watching this, we very much appreciate what he's done. Because at the end of the day, we had, you know, three great candidates, and so each one of them had wonderful things. The one thing that stood out to me of why Dr. Shanoff was so, was an excellent choice, was mine, was that he had an MBA, a Master's degree in Business Administration, and also a doctorate in Leadership. So he had the ability to understand operational side and the business side of things as long as the education. Because right now, we have a legacy system called Terms, that it's the ERP system. It's everything that runs off, the business, the finance, HR. It was built like in the 1960s. It's on the COBOL programming language. They don't even teach COBOL in school anymore, so then nobody graduates. So we had to hire people, we had to get them off drop and pay them as a consultant to maintain our systems. So Dr. Shanoff said, you know what, let's redo this. You know, what a wonderful opportunity, create a new strategic plan. Because we had a strategic plan in place, but the problem was, there was no KPIs. There were no goals measuring success. Like, for instance, the IT department, how long does it take for a travel ticket to get satisfied? And when Beth said, I mentioned earlier, school grades aren't just academic performance. They should also be departmental performance. You know, if the IT department takes one week to fix a computer, that's not an A school in my hand or my mind. Or if the facilities department has to do a paint job and it takes them, you know, two months to paint the school, that's not good. So Dr. Shanoff is now incorporating department heads in the strategic plan. Before the strategic plan, it was always the school board saying, this is what we think. We had that idea generation stage. Then we had it at the cabinet level. Then the cabinet level got to tell us. And just last week, I'm proud to say, we had a room full of 80 people with like department heads from ESC to facilities to IT, all incorporating what the strategic plan would look like, and they set their own goals so that we can have buy-in in making sure it's implemented with fidelity.
Thank you for that. I wanted to jump over and actually talk about cellphone policy in the schools. What do you think about the current cellphone policy? Should there be a blanket ban on cellphone use? Should there be an age limit? How would you handle the cellphone policy in a perfect world? Mr. Melendez, first to you.
Great. I'm somebody, and people know me if they watch the board meetings, I'm very open-minded. You know, nobody, you know, can influence me. The parties can influence me, special interests can influence me. Sometimes I don't even know how I'm going to vote on things because I have a truly open mind when I go to the board meetings. I listen to all my colleagues, even a colleague that I don't like. Even a broken clock is right twice a day. So I'm like, okay, do your little rant, but then let me actually use my logic to make a good decision to move students forward. And so I was thinking about making an exception during lunch because we had the student government representatives from like two different schools. They dressed up to the nines. They gave a wonderful presentation, and my heartstrings fell. And I did a motion to modify the cellphone policy to allow it for cafeteria time only, not during instruction without a bell. And I got outvoted. And that was the best thing to get outvoted, because I tell you what, we've seen the studies now, during lunchtime, kids put the phone down and they talk to each other. They actually socialize, they interact. As a matter of fact, after the pandemic happened, that was an issue. There was a huge strain on mental health issues and that, you know, it's not just the learning deficits that everybody talks about. It's the social-emotional deficits of being at home, being in front of a computer all day, and then having to go back to the classroom and interact with each other. We saw an increase in expulsion hearings, an increase in fights, an increase in discipline. But once they started talking to each other, it went away. I tell you what, I'm on a school board, and we get plenty of hate mail. I hate this vote, that vote. I never got so many thank yous from parents for saying, thank you for allowing our student to put that phone down, put that distraction down. And it's always available for emergencies. We don't make them like destroy the phone or put it in some cubby hole way. You know, it's a trust factor, and each teacher, we give them the discretion to have command and control in their classroom. But we really think that this has been one of the best policies. I have zero complaints from parents now. And I had them initially, but then after it got implemented, and people see the results, you know, students interacting, building those social skills, being excited. They know what their friends do. They know when their birthdays are. And that is just something that I'll never go back on. It's just been one of the best policies we've implemented.
Thank you for that. Ms. Garcia, what are your thoughts?
I agree with having our students in that way. Not a blanket ban like that, just the way it's done right now. I have a student, my daughter, she goes to right now high school. And for me, it's important for her to have her cellphone for just in case an emergency. But while she's in the class, it's important that they take it away. And we're living, we're living in this new era, so technology goes along. We have to learn how to deal with that. And sometimes, and I always say that this is important for them, the kids, that social part, seeing them interacting in school, like right now, whenever I go with the fire department and I have to teach in a class, having those phones away helps a lot. I'm talking about fire prevention, and this is saving lives. That's my business, saving lives. And seeing that those phones are away and they're paying attention to these skills that are very important, I see the difference when they had the phones and now that they don't have the phones. And I'll say that in this new era, we have to definitely adapt to it and prepare the student for the futures, and that part of their interacting, I love it. And the attention that they're giving us when we're teaching, it's fantastic. Because I'm right there in the classroom, and I can tell the difference between not having it and having it.
Thank you for that. Is Osceola County doing an adequate job of providing age-appropriate sex education to students? We'll start with Ms. Garcia.
With that, right at the moment, we're doing a good job. I say, when we talk about health education, including sex, it is very important, this topic for our youth. They are like, like in middle school, whenever I go, they're talking about, oh, this girl, I like this girl, I like the other one. And seeing that, oh, they're bombarded in the media and all that. Having that education scientifically and humanly possibly teach to the kids, it's very important. The approach that we're taking, I agree that we're doing an adequate job, that we're doing it. And but as I say, if we keep it that way scientifically and humanly, that we keep that correct, I know there are some parents that are concerned, will also have a responsibility as parents. And just to create that awareness, there's some girls, and I'll talk about females, that they have their menstrual cycle, and they learn about at school. Sometimes they don't have someone at home that can teach it, and we're teaching it right. I have, my sister is a health teacher, and I've been in the classes, so I seen how it's done. And my daughter herself, he came home, he shared different things that she learned in the class, and I was able to, oh, reassure, oh, yeah, that was great. And if there was something that I didn't like, I also say, oh, you know what, this is another approach. And but it was fantastic. I would say from my experience as a parent and also as a teacher, with the kids, all the concerns that they have right now, I think it's fantastic and we're doing it right.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez?
Yes. Right now, in Osceola County, I know in Orange County, they had some issues and some parents were discussing that. But in Osceola County, trust me, our parents are just as active, and we haven't had any issues with that. My son goes to middle school as well, and so he has, when I do listen to my son as well, believe it or not, he has just as much value as any other parent because, you know, we have to remember that we have to be student-centric. And so when he does have an issue, we always, we have an appeals process to go to the principal and say, hey, can you vet this specific item? Because I think that's very important, that you don't throw out the whole entire curriculum because you identified one specific thing that may not have been appropriate. So what we do in Osceola County is we let them know ahead of time. We notify parents that, hey, next week is Sex Education Week, and we actually give them a waiver. So if some parent really wants to be that way and say, hey, I don't want my kid to do anything, then that's okay. They sign the waiver and they get out. So I think that's the best approach, because we can't punish everybody because of a few students that don't want to do it, and we don't say it's not important. It's very important. Sex education, the part of the word is education. And our goal is to not filter what that education is. Now, we do want to make it age-appropriate, and we want to look at the curriculum, but we have a lot of appeals processes that are currently in place, and starting with the principal. So if some student identifies a particular item, not the entire curriculum, then we can revise that particular item and maybe strike that out or modify it or something like that to make it more appropriate. But luckily, we have no parents that were complaining about the current curriculum that's written. And I do believe part of that reason is because parents that are that sensitive to that kind of material just opt out. And they say, okay, I don't want my student to get involved in that. And I looked at that for my son. I have no problem with it. My son saw the curriculum. He didn't complain, so we moved forward. So I think that's the way to deal with anything, from book banning to anything inappropriate in our schools, is to allow the parents to have that ability to say, hey, I think I identified something and I want to opt out. It's not about banning it and preventing it from everyone else, because every parent has a different tolerant level for what they feel is appropriate for the child.
You have both proved very good at guessing what the next question is going to be. I would like to ask you both to talk about the way Osceola County is handling challenges to books and other educational material. And are you satisfied with the process? And if not, what challenges would you, what changes would you recommend? Mr. Melendez?
Yeah, and one thing that people have to understand, you know, it's been difficult being on the school board the last four years. You know, I wish, I can't wait to the next four years where, man, you know, we had this movement of everybody just destroying education or attacking it. They made it, they want to make it partisan. They want to put term limits on us. They want to, you know, implement all these bills and all these restrictions on us. So we are, as a district, are trying to navigate creating new policies and procedures. So there's always going to be some hiccups along the way. What we did do is we looked at, you know, making sure there's an appropriate appeals process for whatever it is, you know? And so we think that parents still need to be a part of the equation. The difference is, parents don't dictate what we do. There's a difference between parental involvement and them having the ability to say, this is how you're going to run your schools. Now, we hire a superintendent to help run our schools, and so, but that doesn't mean we don't listen to stakeholder input. We do want parents to have a voice, and if they see something inappropriate, that's what we do. Like, and I remember watching your Orange County debate. One guy was like, well, how do we implement a rating system? Well, we did in Osceola County. And so when we have our books, we have books that are labeled mature or that are okay. And so, and if they're labeled mature, parents at the beginning of the school year can opt in or opt out. They can say, I don't mind, my child reads anything. Others goes, you know what, I don't feel comfortable with them reading mature-level books. So then those books are excluded from them. So they have an ID scanner that looks at that and says, hey, and I'll flag the media center and say, this book, their parent said no to them. And so to me, that's really the way to do it, is to include parents' input as much as possible without them dictating the policy and how we're going to do things for everybody else.
Ms. Garcia, your thoughts?
The public schools already develop policies, and they have educational value. And at the level, they're available for the students. I believe definitely that this is the way, because our students deserve the school district that does this job very well. And for me, hire professional, we are hiring already professionals and experts that determine which books are good for our student and have educational value. I think we should focus more in those policies to make sure they are working. And they are established already, and we should continue doing that. And because when this is done correctly, definitely the entire community take advantage of that and benefit from it, because it's the right way to do it. In my experience as a mother and having a student in the school, I can say that in the beginning of the year, you get a way to say, like, if you agree of your student having access to that, I definitely have that right as a parent to decide which material they have access to the library. So that's what I think we should continue doing that and going back to those policies and reviewing them whenever something is challenged.
Thank you so much. I wanted to ask one last question, and it's something that I find that people really enjoy talking about. Osceola County offers its students many career and technical programs and 16 career clusters along with the Pathways Program that is a collaboration between Osceola and Orange Counties and Valencia State. Do you think students across Osceola County have adequate access to the programs that interest them? And are there any areas where you think there's an immediate need to extend them? We understand they're expensive, of course. Ms. Garcia, could you address that?
There is always an opportunity to grow and expand the programs that we have. But I'll say that the programs, right now, we have the Poensiana Business Academy. That's awesome for our community. Mr. Hager, he's doing an excellent job there with the students and the services they have. The programs are excellent. We are providing services and applications to the students that are very expensive, that they won't, for any other way, they won't be probably able to afford. And that's provided there in that program. Also, we have Pats, that's a professional and technical high school, and that offers all the nurse, the programs that design, graphic designs. And those are, they're going with the era that we're living, the technology. We're preparing our students. And I always say we can add more, but the programs are fantastic, and we're giving that opportunity. What I will do is just extend that promotion and the marketing to the parents. Some of the parents and things that I've seen throughout this campaign, that I spoke to parents, they don't know about some of the programs that we have, technical programs. I will expand to that, and I will do like outreach, talking about the programs and the technical programs to the parents. Because this week, even this week, yesterday, we had the open house, and I saw just a few of And I saw just a few of familiar faces from my daughter's school. And I was like, oh gosh, we should have more here from her school. And there was just a few. And probably those parents, they don't know about that specific school and the the what they have to offer.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez, same same question?
Thank you. I've been a champion of the C T E programs, the career and technical education. As a matter of fact, just last week, I went to the Kennedy Space Center where Space Florida is trying to do a memorandum of understanding to create space academies to our school district. You know, Congressman Darren Soto appointed me to the service academy nomination board. And I saw all these students getting the private pilot license in Timber Creek. Now it's like, how come Osceola County can't do something like that? So we looked at Osceola High School, which has the airport in its backyard. And we said, okay, let's create a dual enrollment program with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. So we just signed that agreement like two years ago during my term. So I wanted to make sure that each school has different areas that they can specialize in. So the same thing like she had mentioned, Poensiana High School has the business academy, but they also have addition finance. They actually have like a bank branch at the school so kids can actually see it. I actually created the construction technology program called the ACE where students or not students, where contractors building schools have to hire a student. Because I think it's one thing to learn it in a book, which are most college ready students. And technical students have to be, tend to be more hands-on approach. So we made all these contractors that are building a hundred million dollar schools. We told them, hire at least one student as an intern. That happened and I'm proud to tell you, I think Pearl and a couple of the contractors hired them full time because they got to see them on the job and they see that they had the OSHA training, they had the industry certifications. And I think that's very critical because right now, under the high school accountability system to the state of Florida, they give you credit for certifications, but they lump it all together in the same bucket as dual enrollment and advanced placement. No, I think there should be a separate bucket because right now there's high school graduations that count in acceleration. No, it should be acceleration for dual enrollment and then career and technical education should be its own separate bucket. Because not every student wants to go to a four-year college. So we have to provide them all those ample opportunities to do it. But also the state of Florida needs to back us up and change accountability. So when they score high schools, that the kids that are going to career and technical education are valued just as much as those going to four-year AP and dual enrollment programs.
Thank you so much. I I I do love that question. Um, and in a minute, I am going to ask both these candidates to make their closing statements. But first, I'd like to um, remind everybody that the Orlando Sentinel will be making an endorsement in this race. But as always, we urge um, people to take a look at both candidates for themselves. Seek them out on social media, um, attend school board meetings and look at video of of old meetings on the web. Um, you can talk to your neighbors, you can check out, of course, our excellent news coverage. And then pick the candidate who most um, meets your values. And do you remember that there is a third candidate in this race? And she wasn't here today, but but she is, she is um, active and engaged in in her campaign as well. So um, so with that, we are going to ask our our two candidates to make their closing pitch as to why you should mark their name for school board. And we'll start with Ms. Garcia.
First, I want to say that I have a master's degree in education and school counseling. I have a bachelor's degree in social work and psychology. And my entire career has been dedicated to education. I want to continue this lifelong um, desire and work hard work that I've done in my community to improve our school serving on the school board. And my priorities right now are safety of our students. I also would like to increase the salary of our teachers and definitely student improvement and academic improvement. And this only happened if you can vote for me, if you vote for me, that will give me that chance to continue this lifelong career and in education. For me, as a mother, as a grandmother, I care about my community. I've been involved in this community for the last twenty-three years, working as a public servant. So being a public servant is some something that, only with that, that will tell you a lot that all my involvement, I work for the county as a communicator. I started at the school district as a teacher, especially students teacher, and I'm proud to say that. And in addition, uh, right now, working for the fire department as an educator, I go to every school every day and I seen the needs. I seen what our students need and I really care about my community. And um, it just, it's time to vote and you have that opportunity right now during the early voting. And from nine to six, you can visit any of our precincts and I'm here to serve. And I'm here with all my heart and integrity and giving my best.
Thank you so much. Mr. Melendez, you want to wrap this up?
Yes. Well, first, I want to thank the Orlando Sentinel for doing this. It's very important that the voters get informed on who their candidates are and where they stand on the issues. And I tell you right now, it's been an absolute honor serving for the last four years. You know, I'm one of those rare school board members that attends every single graduation because you will see that some of them only attend graduations that are in their district. Um, I attend all expulsion hearings. I go to um, like for instance, there's somebody in St. Cloud, that's not even in district two. Parents have issues, I go to St. Cloud just as fast as I go to somebody in district two. So I think that's somebody that has that integrity. And one of the reasons why is because I really appreciate what we do. Because after the pandemic, people have to realize the pandemic changed everything. And while they were on spring break, don't forget, our teachers were out on vacations in Italy or doing whatever, visiting family. All of a sudden, we told them, there's this pandemic and now they have to do everything online. They had to alter their curriculums. We had to get devices one-to-one, I T departments. I mean, folks, this isn't a speedboat. This is an aircraft carrier. And anyone who's been in the military knows it's not easy to turn the trajectory of an aircraft carrier. And we did with the best of our abilities. And I tell you right now, I really honor the effort of every single teacher that has done that because my son was a part of that and they asked him, do you want to go online? Do you want to do a hybrid option where you do both? Do you feel comfortable and safe coming back to the school district? So I appreciate that they valued my son as if it was anybody else. And on the school board, I am being that same advocate. I did the S R R task force. I fought the sheriff that wanted to put um, school guardians in school versus law enforcement. But so was K P D, the Kasimian Police Department, you know? So when I created the S R O task force, we had community input, which was very important. It wasn't me saying, this is what we need to do. It was members from the community, including the sheriff's office and K P D. We got together at a table and came to an agreement saying, you know what, S R Os and law enforcement officers in our schools are the best option. We just need them to be more mentors. Don't just be guardians. Actually work with our students, volunteer, coach. And as you can tell, this is my last thing I'm going to say, is I'm extremely passionate. I want to be here. This isn't a stepping stone for me to run for the senate or anything like that. I chose to run for the school district because my son has great opportunities and I want every student to have the same opportunity that he has to achieve their purpose in life. So thank you everyone for your attention. And again, thank you, Orlando Sentinel for putting this together. It's very important. God bless. And also thank you besides, you know, we're opponents, but you know, I can still respect the things that you've done in the past. And so um, thank you for putting your hat in the ring.
Thank you, Julius.
Thank you both so much and we wish you the best of luck.